May those who serve the Huntsville community govern with dignity and respect. And may our proceedings be guided by your divine wisdom and our decisions be deferential to those being governed. Bind us together with your inclusive love, opening our minds and hearts to discern what is right from wrong, what is truth from deception, and what is just in your sight. Grant us our prayer as we ask it in your holy and righteous name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you Reverend Douglas. Thank you Councilman Culver. You have received the minutes of the regular meeting held July 27, 2017. Are there any changes or additions to be made to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted. Item four, resolutions and special recognitions. We have a number of them. First, item 4A, the mayor's resolutions. Mayor Battle, we turn the time to you.
Thank you, Madam President. If I could ask Steve Ivey to come up. Steve is here and we have a group of young baseball players who are state champions here. And Mr. Russell will come because this is his district and besides that, he likes baseball. So, Mr. Ivey, would you like to tell us about this?
Yes, sir. We're really proud. Coach, if you'll come on up and bring your team up while I'm giving them a little history about it. Tonight, we have the 9-10 All-Star Team from International. They were, they won the District Eight Championship and beat it Eastern, which was a big success for them. And then from there, they went on and won the State Championship and advanced down. And I'm gonna let Coach Moody talk about the rest of it.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank the City of Huntsville Council and thank you to Mr. Russell for getting this done for us. It's a great opportunity for the kids and something they'll remember for the rest of their lives. And thank you Mayor Battle for having us. And this is, like I said, an opportunity for these boys that will bring memories y'all will never forget. I came up here when I was in high school for football and I still have not forgotten it. Real quick, recapping our season, we won District, we won State. But I'd like to talk more about the boys and the people who surround them, how good the kids they are and good parents and good coaches that we have to put this all together. Me personally, I've coached these boys for most of them, some form or fashion, park ball, All-Stars, three, four, five years. Couldn't put together two years in a row. We could not get it done. District, came around this year, we knew it would be different. Swept District, won three games in a row. Went down to State, we knew State would be tough. And played a good McCullough team, won the first game, lost the second game, got down 12 to 5, I believe, in the last game. You know, as 12-year-olds, 11-year-olds, you're not supposed to come back from that deficit. And as a coach, at that point, in that age level, you can't do anything. They have to do it. And they hit, they played as a team, they bought into what we were selling them. Everybody contributed this whole year. And I want to say thank you to y'all because we wouldn't be up here without y'all. And I want to say thank you to coaches, best coaching staff you can have, Peter Farrell, Ryan Parker. And thank you to Chad Bostick, who behind the scenes does everything for our part. So, thank you Chad. And last but not least, most important, because without the parents and the family and the aunts and uncles, sisters, brothers, all the support we had, just phenomenal. So, thank y'all and I'll announce the team now. Braden Bostick, he played first base and catcher for us, did a great job, plays from right field. Davis Parker, so our leadoff hitter, played centerfield pretty much the whole time, made some great spectacular plays. Jax McClung, batting three hole for us, played third base, pitched, shortstop, had a great hitting season. Wyatt Bloom, played right field, left field, pretty much all outfield for us, had a great year, a lot of speed. Riley Moss, played infield, outfield, as you see, a lot of these kids are very versatile and had a good year. William Mitchell, one of the younger ones, came onboard with us, made a huge impact. And he's what we call a player's coach. William Pugh, our catcher, he's been with us for years, always called for us, always done a great job, always does what coaches ask him. Sims Bowman, played first base, third base, left field, had a great pitching performance in the last game and hitting. If we didn't have him, I don't know if we'd be standing up here right now. Rowan Campbell, Rowan, a great team player, played for us in the outfield, hit very well, did everything we asked. Garner Farrell, pretty much held down second base for us, pitched a lot, came along as a pitcher, did really well, and he hit the ball extremely well also. Huck Kinsley, Huck was probably our number one pitcher we had all year, great size, great future, threw hard, and he hit very well also. Cadem Rodeman, played catcher, one of our two catchers that played throughout the year, came around hitting and did very well for us. And last, Tyce Moody, played shortstop for us, hit the ball well, and contributed a lot to us. So, once again, thank you to the Huntsville City Council, thank you, Mr. Russell, and thank you Mayor Battle for having us. Thank you.
And if y'all notice, y'all have your own paparazzi out here. There's about 30 cameras up in the air, so we better get a good picture. Make sure the small guys up front and the big guys in back.
Trey, y'all bring your assistants up for the picture.
Trey, bring your assistants up. Come on up, coaches.
We might need one a little bit later. Most of the cameras are leaving right there. All right. Now, our head of Parks Recreation, Steve Ivey, has a life-saving award that he'd like to present, a very special occasion here. Steve?
If I could get Tommy Brown and Mac to come up with me, please, and bring y'all staff, and if I could get the people from the pool to please come also.
Thank you. I'm gonna pass it around. Thank y'all. Come on up. Come on up here, ladies. I'll help you. Thank y'all.
Mayor, let me tell you about this team. On June 19th, and I remember that morning well, it was a department head, I got a call from Dave Delisser and said, "Steve, we've got a lady down." And she's non-responsive. And Ms. Kelsner was a lady that had just finished her exercise class and was in the pool. She was socializing with her friends, and at that time, she went total arrest and went down. Kim Putman and CJ, two staff members from Aquatics, went in and retrieved her and got her out, pulled her to the side.
We congratulate our state championship team and will permit them to leave.
At that time, Adriana went out and got the CPR and got the AD machine, and they brought her in. Kim and Adriana started administering CPR. We shocked her three times during that time, waiting for Huntsville Fire Department and the HEMSI to get there. At that time, CJ went to the parking lot and his security made sure he showed them how to come in. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mac and let him talk about the rest of it.
Thank you. And I'd like to also echo that, there's a lot of stuff that we do that's truly a team effort with a lot of folks. And so, from talking to our guys, y'all arrived, and when y'all arrived, they were already doing CPR, so y'all took over from there. And also, I think, went through several shocks and trying to keep our way cleared, and went through several times of shocking the patient while we're waiting for HEMSI to arrive. And so, there, the team effort kept with everybody still working together. And I think y'all rode in, some of y'all rode in, or I guess Russell rode in ambulance with them when they left. And turn it over to Mr. Brown to talk about theirs for HEMSI's.
Thank you, Chief. Shane Duran, Rob Gaffin, and Walter Daultrey were the three medics that were on the scene. Walter is the supervisor, Kenneth Burke is the supervisor as well. They continued advanced cardiac life support, defibrillated Ms. Carleen a couple more times, administered the appropriate drugs, and a 12 lead DKG to Huntsville Hospital. She did regain a heart rate back, thanks again to what Chief said, team effort, starting with these young ladies doing CPR, fire guys coming in, defibrillating, doing CPR, continuing that, and then riding in with our medics to the hospital. So, it was a great team effort, and that's what it takes. And Walter mentioned something that I want to mention too, is it starts with citizen CPR. In this case, it was employees, but citizen CPR is a critical, a critical part of this. So, another part of the team, these guys sent the 12 lead to the hospital, the emergency room staff and doctors interpret the 12 lead, put the cath lab on alert, so they rushed the patient through the hospital emergency really quickly, right up to the cath lab, and they try to clear the arteries to fix a heart attack. So, great team effort, great system, everybody works together, it works right. And so, let me, let me add the best part of the whole situation. I just happen to be lucky to be personal friends with Ms. Carleen and her family, our family are personal friends. We've kind of kept up with her progress. And the great news is, because of all this team effort, she is alive and doing well. She's gone through rehab, she's at home now, still doing a little rehab. She's a little too weak to get out now, so she couldn't be here. Talked to her daughter a couple of days ago, and she wanted me to express the family's appreciation to all of you for what you did and to thank you for saving their mother's life, literally. And they expect her to be back at the nadatorium and back at Gibson's, eating breakfast and doing the things she likes to do in a couple of days, a couple of weeks.
And it really was a team effort, and the end result is that somebody's living today who would not have been living if y'all hadn't done what you did. So, thank you to each of you. And if y'all would please go around, let the council thank you also, I would appreciate it. And Chief, you want to tell us something? Tell us about it.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. If I could, I'd like to ask driver engineer Joshua Schumate to come up. Tell you a little bit about this. Josh, one of our driver engineers, and we're presenting him with a life-saving award also. Actually, Josh is pretty humble. We didn't know a whole lot about what had taken place till I got a letter from the fire chief at Orange Beach, and then following it, the mayor got a letter from the mayor of Orange Beach telling us what had taken place back in the last part of the spring. And basically, in a nutshell, Josh was on vacation, and it was a day on the beach, but it was, had red flag warnings, they had riptides, you really shouldn't have been out there. But there was a young man, I think 14-years-old, that decided to go out there, and he got in serious trouble. And as to kind of paraphrasing from what the mayor and the fire chief of Orange Beach said, they were over a mile from their closest lifeguards. And Josh was down there, and they were watching, and they could tell he got in trouble. And there was nothing to do but to go after him. And I guess, this is one of the things, I just feel honored to be able to present awards like this because we tell our firefighters when they come on, you know, you represent Huntsville Fire Department and the city of Huntsville, whether you're on duty or whether you're off-duty. And I think this is just another example of not only for Huntsville Fire Department, but actually, from what I've seen from probably all city employees that we see, see all the time, of you are who you are and you do what you're gonna do. So, I think it's just, Josh had to go out to get him, and then he was still really, at one point, I think he was concerned, he didn't know if he was both gonna get back or not. And I know Josh shared with me a few minutes ago, he said, "It was all I could do, trying to hold him above water." And the lifeguards also said that Josh went under several times himself trying to hold the young man above water. And, you know, at great risk to himself. But I do know if some of y'all heard us coming on Emergency Run, we have some big sirens on front of those fire trucks. We call them federal queues or B&amp;M Super Chiefs, that typically, you can tell a fire truck, you know what you're listening to, because most other emergency vehicles don't have enough, big enough batteries or current, electrical current to run though, so we can tell them. And I know Josh told me, he said, "That was the best sounding federal queue I could hear coming to me," that I could hear about the time I was getting back towards the sand and getting him on there. But again, the mayor stated in the letter to Mayor Battle, that had it not been for his action, that his lifeguard team said that the young man, without a doubt, would not have made it. He would have been a victim and a fatality in the water there at Orange Beach. So, I've got a life-saving award over here that I'd like to present to you, Josh, and medal there to go with it. And we really appreciate what y'all, you do, you make us all proud.
The council also has a resolution for adoption and presentation tonight. 4B1 is a resolution recognizing Mary Gale Tomlin for her tireless dedication and outstanding achievements during her service to the Huntsville Police Department. Second. The chair moves for approval, second by Mr. Kling. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have just spent some time here recognizing individuals, and we do that at the council meetings because we want to create role models and standards of excellence for all of us. As we seek to recruit more young women to the ranks of the Huntsville Police Department, they need look no further for an exceptional role model than the woman we are honoring tonight, who has dedicated her life to law enforcement, education, and community service. Mary Gale Tomlin came to work in the Huntsville Police Department in 1963 as the first female police officer. After 26 years of tireless service, she retired in 1989 as a detective sergeant. Ms. Tomlin, will you please join us? Mr. Councilman Culver was one of her first dear officers. Come, stand right here where the camera can see you and everyone can see how terrific you are. So, we're going to embarrass you further, because I have a resolution we're going to read to tell everybody about all the terrific things you did. And so, here's what it says. Whereas Mary Gale Tomlin, Detective Sergeant Retired, Huntsville Police Department, is due recognition and accolades rendered in honor and respect for her lifelong commitment to justice, children in desperate straits, and education. Her accolades span the White House recognition by President Ronald Reagan through almost a decade of service with the Federal Bureau of Investigation. She was Huntsville's first policewoman, first female detective, first female detective sergeant. She was also a graduate of the University of Southern California Delinquency Control Institute, and she earned her bachelor's and master's degrees in history from the University of Alabama in Huntsville. She was an initiator of Huntsville's National Children's Advocacy Center and also the Huntsville's Drug Abuse Resistance Education Dare Program, of which Mr. Culver was one of her trainees. Sergeant Tomlin also commanded, I think this is the coolest part, commanded the arson and bomb squad and the felony apprehension squad. She was recognized and received Alabama's Outstanding Police Officer Award as well as Huntsville's Outstanding Law Enforcement Officer Award. And whereas Mary Gale Tomlin, Detective Sergeant Retired, rose from what many describe as humble and austere beginnings in the Southern Appalachia and Sand Mountain to achieve the previous outlined levels of exceptionalism, exemplifying American individualism, professional achievement, and acceptance of individual responsibility through her tireless dedication to guiding wayward youth to lives of responsibility and honor which are a hallmark of our great republic. In Sergeant Tomlin's own words, "I have had a full life, I have traveled all over the United States and around the world, through good times and bads, I have no regrets, I would do it all again." Did you say that? There you go. And whereas, let it be known by these presence that all persons know, the stalwart dedication of Detective Sergeant Mary Gale Tomlin as an example that few, if any, can match. She truly served as a role model for children then, now, and the children in Huntsville's future, as well as the young women seeking to wear the police department uniform. And we have on display tonight the original uniform that Detective Tomlin, Sergeant Tomlin wore. Thank you Chief Giles for finding that for us. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council and mayor of the city of Huntsville that we hereby recognize and honor Mary Gale Tomlin, Detective Sergeant Retired, Huntsville Police Department, for her numerous achievements and lifelong dedication to the betterment of all aspects of our city through her untiring efforts to make Huntsville the best of the best city in which to live, adopted this day. Congratulations, Sergeant Tomlin. Would you like to say anything?
Well, y'all pulled a good one on me. I thought I was gonna come up here and get a piece of paper and say hi and bye. Thank you so much. I don't, I don't really know what to say. I'm honored. I was, I want to thank all of you who contributed to this. I'm gonna especially thank Kurt Giles for the Huntsville Police Department, my good friend Mary Jane Kayler, who has contributed so much to this community over the years. You know, it was an honor for me to be chosen as Huntsville's first female police officer. I didn't know really what I was getting into, but I thought it would be a challenge, and that's why I took the job. And the chief police told me, he said, "Tell you something, if there was no female police officers in," he said, "If you wash out," he said, "they're gonna tar and feather me and you and run us both out of town." And I believed him. And I, but it all worked out. I survived. I spent 26 years and three months with the Huntsville Police Department. Those were some of the best years of my life. And all the people and the friends that I've known and worked with and here tonight, it's just, it's the greatest night of my life, I guess. So, thank you all.
Thank you for your service. I know the council members would like to shake your hand. You're that important, they're coming to you. And I know there are many friends and family here tonight, and they have arranged to have a little reception in the break room, so you're welcome to join Sergeant Tomlin for that. Thank you all for being here. We'll go on with the remainder of our agenda. We have no business with outside legal representation. Item six is public hearings. 6A, public hearings to be held, 6A1. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the boarding and securing of certain properties.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
Ms. Jordan.
The property identified in this resolution, 2226 Norwood Drive Northwest, was found standing open and unsecure, and as a result, community development staff secured the property. The cost for securing this property was $241.16. The owners received a written request for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that we assess this cost.
Public hearing is open. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this item? Ms. Reed.
I want to ask you one question. Jackie Reed, what does this mean when you say you're assessing the cost of the boarding and securing of certain property? What does that mean?
Ms. Jordan.
Sure. It means that we will attach this cost to the tax bill for this property, and we will recoup that cost at an appropriate time.
And is it not that it's an issue of public safety? The building has been left open?
That's correct.
People can go in, and so this, by boarding it, it keeps the public safe?
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this item? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
Madam President, I move to approve the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Keith. Is there any discussion from the council? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6A2 is a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Ms. Jordan.
Yes, Dr. Robinson. Counsel, this resolution identifies 41 properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weed ordinance. 27 of the property owners are local, and 14 are out of state or out of the area. All 41 owners received written notification by first-class mail that they were in violation of the ordinance. They were all given 14 days to come into compliance with the ordinance, and they didn't. So, their grass was cut by city staff, and we're asking that you assess these property owners for the costs associated.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this item? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sandra Purser.
And your address, Ms. Purser?
2503 Hermosa Circle is the address of the land that was assessed.
Which one?
Welcome.
Okay. I had called three different times to speak to someone about getting an extension on it because we were having all that rain and all then. And Mr. Bowen usually does my property for me, and he went over and cut the grass. And the city went the next day. Was it 10? He said about 10 days later. I thought it was earlier than that, but he had already cut it. And there was substantial damage done to my home from where they did it, although I'm being told that they don't do any harm when they're cutting grass. So, I'm just pleading on everyone's mercy. I'm on disability, that's the only income I have. And I need an extension for the monies that I have to pay, if I can at all get that, please.
And Ms. Jordan, what is the process for getting that extension?
Well, we're beyond that point at this point. You know, we don't-
Welcome.
Okay. I had called three different times to speak to someone about getting an extension on it because we were having all that rain and all then. And Mr. Bowen usually does my property for me, and he went over and cut the grass. And the city went the next day. Was it 10? He said about 10 days later. I thought it was earlier than that, but he had already cut it. And there was substantial damage done to my home from where they did it, although I'm being told that they don't do any harm when they're cutting grass. So I'm just pleading on everyone's mercy. I'm on disability. That's the only income I have. And I need an extension for the monies that I have to pay, if I can at all get that, please.
And Ms. Jordan, what is the process for getting that extension?
Well, we're beyond that point at this point. You know, we don't cite property owners until the grass is already 12 inches high, and then they get another 14 days to come into compliance with the ordinance. You know, whatever your pleasure tonight, I'm fine with, but this is, you know, we have before and after pictures for each property that we cut. I mean, you know, our goal is to eliminate the overgrowth of grass and weeds. It becomes a negative for the entire community, and, you know, we are where we are today. You know, I'd be happy to, I do have, is it Ms.?
Perser. Yes, thank you.
You know, in the future, I'd be happy to reach out to her, have the inspector reach out to her, should she be back in this position at this point, though. This is the item before you, and we'll, of course, do whatever you direct.
Perhaps I understood what Ms. Perser was asking, was if there was some way to work out paying the fine.
Right. She won't have to pay right away. She'll pay at a later time, and I'd be happy to talk to her after this.
Okay.
So if you all could get together to have that conversation?
Sure.
Yes, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this item? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Is there discussion or question, Mr. Keith?
Just a quick question, Ms. Jordan.
Yes.
Have we ever done a payment program for these assessed properties? Has there ever been a, you know, because I imagine that the payment process, I mean, the number changes for every lot size and so forth and so on. Have we ever done a payment process?
We haven't done a payment process, and I know we've been talking about just different options. I'll be happy to talk to Ms. Perser.
Yes, I was just wondering if we ever have.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I might point out, Councilmember, that this will go as a lien against the property, and liens against the property are settled at the time the property is sold. So this is not like she's gonna automatically get a bill that she has to pay. We will send her a bill. She can't pay it, we'll go as a lien against the property, and when the property is sold, it will be reimbursed back to the city.
That's correct. Are there any other questions? All in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Six B, are public hearings to be set. Ms. Jordan, there are no dates next to these public hearings. Are they all going to be set for the next council meeting, for August 24th?
Let's see. All of the planning items, are those?
Madam President, if I might suggest we come back to these items.
Let's come back to this. We'll give you a chance to.
Okay, sure. I'll check with staff.
We were so involved with the recognitions before we started that I don't know if anybody picked that up.
Okay.
So if we could, if we could come back to that item after the planning staff has had an opportunity to do, to take a look at that and set dates for each of those, please.
I will do that. I will, and I hope that you won't mind addressing item number four for me tonight. Even though this is a...
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right, and then I'll get back to you on items one, two, and three.
We can, we can, so you would like us to vote on item four?
Right. I need to present it to you tonight.
Okay. We will have that, we will have that conversation at the time, then. We will move on then momentarily to item seven, communications from the public. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, you may come to the podium. Please give us your name and your address. You will have three minutes to address the council. We, and we have a list here. We will begin with Felicia Dangerfield. Please come to the podium. You will have three minutes. Give us your name and address, Ms. Dangerfield. Is Ms. Dangerfield here? If she comes in, we will come back to Ms. Dangerfield. We will move on to Lydia Weeks. Her subject is dementia. Ms. Weeks.
Thank you. My name is Lydia Weeks. I am with Tarrcoq Area Agency on Aging and Dementia Friendly Alabama.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to speak with you about Tarrcoq's Dementia Friendly Alabama Project. Now, this project is a national model. It's called Dementia Friendly America. Alabama's version is Dementia Friendly Alabama, and the project started in Montgomery. Tarrcoq was chosen to expand this project to the northeast part of the state. Its goal is to foster a welcoming community for those suffering with dementia and their care partners. Now, locally, there are about 6,800 individuals and families that are affected here in Madison County with Alzheimer's disease, and those numbers were provided by the local chapter of the Alzheimer's Association. Tarrcoq has taken on the responsibility of increasing community awareness for this growing problem of dementia in our region by educating and training the public on ways that they can interact with those suffering with dementia. The premise is not just to be nice with individuals with dementia. Imagine a community where individuals can thrive, a community where they feel included, a community where they feel valued. That is the entire premise of the Dementia Friendly Alabama movement. We want to make sure that those individuals can go out in the community and conduct their day-to-day tasks without being judged or feeling as though there is a stigma that's associated with dementia. So locally, over the past four months, Tarrcoq has trained law enforcement officials. We've managed to train school-aged children, financial institutions, other vital governmental agencies and professionals, and most importantly, family caregivers in our region, but we can't do this alone. In an effort to continue to increase public awareness, Tarrcoq and Dementia Friendly Alabama, in conjunction with our local chapter of the Alzheimer's Association, are hosting a free public screening of Glenn Campbell, I'll Be Me. Now, I know everyone is aware that Glenn Campbell recently passed away. We have been planning this movie since about June, so it's, I think the awareness now has been heightened. This event will take place at Waterford Park in the heart of the Village of Providence on Saturday, August 26. Festivities will begin at 5:30. The movie starts at sundown. We will provide dementia education, snacks, fun, and games. In hopes of bridging the generation gap, all parts of the family are welcome. Now, I would like to extend a personal invitation to each of you to attend this event and show your support for this very important cause. I hope to see you at the Village of Providence.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight. What a great cause.
I'm not really sure how to get them to you.
If you'd like to just give them to Councilwoman Keith, and he will distribute them down to the rest of us.
Dr. Robinson, may I have a moment, please?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. So I met with Ms. Weeks and Mr. Emmett Davis, both of Tarrcoq, and I'm extremely impressed with what they're doing. This is a very educational program, and this dementia, which it affected my family, my mother had dementia, and ultimately Alzheimer's, and, but this program, this disease, for lack of a better description, is a non-discriminatory, equal-opportunity life destroyer, if we allow it to. So I'm certainly hopeful, Mayor, perhaps when we get into our budget hearings, that maybe we can do something to help to get the word out. They're operating on a shoestring budget, and this is something that certainly goes to enhancing the quality of life for all of our residents. So my colleagues on the council, let's be cognizant of that. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Weeks. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. The next person to sign up is Jackie Reed, subject is government issues.
I am Jackie Reed. Government issues concerns me quite a bit, yes. Keeps me up at night. After I leave the meetings, I go home crying a lot of times, even after I tell you I love you. But I'm sent to do this job, and I have to do it. I'd like to thank y'all for allowing the public input on many of the issues. We've got a lot of good children, citizens, and employees in the city of Huntsville. That helps make a good city. Many issues that do bother me, and one of them is still haunting me, is about the golf course. Why did you all do that? With an election coming up next year, and three of you gonna be in that election, we are not happy about this golf course. Y'all could've shared that golf course. You never came up with option two. That is same thing you done to the big mall out there. You didn't tell the truth about what's going on. Option two should've been laid before the public. It still should be. I hear about that every time I go all over this city. And then I turned on Facebook the other night, and I heard this lady talking about Grissom School down there. These schools were built without planning with the school system. Y'all were interested more in the property than you were the safety of the children or the parking and all the stuff that's going on. She says they can't ride the bus five miles from Grissom. They're cutting through people's neighborhoods, and there's no sidewalks for the kids to grow on. I don't know whose area that is, but she's been told to call the city of Huntsville. They need to get involved in the school system more than you're doing, in my opinion. I just think that it's between you all and school board to make the safety, and the schools do a good job for the children and the citizens. Whatever you have to do, you need to do better planning, set up. I hear you have secret meetings every now and then. You need to lay these meetings up for the public, let them get involved. Anyway, we got property problems, and I called the planning departments today to see how many wrecks is being located on Jordan Lane and Holmes Avenue, and how many wrecks have we had over there in the past two years. I was sent somewhere else, and then I was told the police department didn't have that issue, that something called Icon. Who's Icon? They would have the message, or whatever that is. Somebody explain Icon to me. They will tell me how many wrecks they had, nobody else could tell me. So if somebody come up with that, I'd like to know who that is. Is that one of your contracts you've set out to be done? I surely hope not. Anyway, I have a problem with this bicycle route on this, on this agenda tonight. Y'all are gonna be sued, you all and the state, if you don't quit using Transportation Department and our city streets looking like they do, of putting in bicycle lanes. Go over on Holmes Avenue and see what a mess, and they're going through there putting up little red ribbons and getting ready for a bicycle lane. This is not a bicycle city.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
I'll be back.
Your three minutes are...
I'll be back. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
If I could, I guess I'd need to correct something that was said by the previous speaker. There was an option two, and I do believe Ms. Reed was in the room at the time. I had proposed amending Mr. Russell's main motion to put the golf course in and reroute the, or re-site the mountain bike and cross-country track. But I do want to point out that, for the record, Ms. Reed was in the room when that amendment was proposed.
And I guess I would also like to follow up with comments regarding, regarding Grissom. We have, our traffic department did an exceptional job of putting in pedestrian access at Weatherly and at Meadowbrook, so students from the other side of the parkway could bike and walk to school. It was done very quickly, at the city's expense, and so sidewalks are in there. I had some conversations yesterday with Aldot about possibly adding some other sidewalks, and we will continue to look at pedestrian and bike safety as, in every way that we possibly can to keep our students safe. In addition to that, with regard to the traffic issues at Grissom, every time we open school every year, there are traffic issues as new students come, and new parents come, and new student drivers come, and everybody tries to figure things out. And that's only elevated when it's a new school, and people are trying to figure out the traffic pattern. So it's simply going to be a matter of time. It's my understanding that the superintendent has put together a team to look at how the flow is working. I have been told that every day it's getting better, that people are learning to adjust their start times and leave times, and it's, it's all going to work together. People are aware of the problem and are working on it. Thank you for your concern. Next person to sign up is Mr. Tom Devonish. Mr. Devonish, is Mr. Devonish here? Mr. Devonish, please come to the microphone.
Yeah.
Jack, Ms. Reed.
Frankie.
Ms. Reed.
Glad to give an answer.
Mr. Devonish, welcome.
Hi. Tom Devonish, 2807 Castle Pine Circle, Hampton Cove. I am here today to talk to you about a surface parking lot on Eustace Avenue. We've, there's an effort by a local developer to build a, he started out with a nine-story condo, and anyway, he has to get a variance. He's, I'm not sure that he's passed some of the requirements, but basically, he owns, and I have an email and some maps that I want to give to all of you, but he owns 18.5% of the property that he wants to develop. And of all the people that this city could give that property to, he is not the one. On the, I sent this email string to you all on Wednesday, to everybody. I sent it to John two weeks ago. This has been a running question for a long time, but I think the key here is that he's trying to get a variance on a piece of property that he does not own, which has cost literally thousands of hours of people's time discussing this, and who's gonna do what, and what, how ugly his building is, and, you know, the cave that goes under the property, and the parking lot that he wants to build. He wants to build this between two of the churches in downtown Huntsville, Church of Nativity and First Methodist. And Church of Nativity is the only building in Huntsville that is on the National Register of Historic Places, the only building. And he wants to dig, even though there's a cave, I mean, this, he does not have, as far as I know, and if he does have, he should be making it public, a geophysical study of that parking lot. First of all, he doesn't own the parking lot. He shouldn't be doing any geophysical study. And secondly, if he has, he should be disclosing that to the public. And so, you know, the city council needs to stop this before he comes before a variance committee meeting next week and wastes everybody's time. He's wasting your time, he's wasting my time, the church's, both churches' time, and it's the variance committee's time. He came before the variance committee last month, and...
Time is up, Mr. Devonish. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We'll all look at this information.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. The next person to sign up is Tommy Harper. Subject is council. Is Mr. Harper here? Mr. Harper is not here. The next person to sign up is Suzie Harper. Subject is council. Is Ms. Harper here? They may well have been in that group that's already left. Again, is Felicia Dangerfield here? We'll come back to... That concludes all of the people who have signed up. Now, if it please the council, we will go back to item six B, public hearings to be set. I think we did a little bit of research here and found that all those items one, two, and three are going to be set for September 28th.
That's correct. And I'm sorry that they did not appear on your agenda, but they were in the cover sheet, and we'll make sure that we're conscious of that placement in the future.
We're all figuring out a new software. I think. So we will resume then with item six B, public hearings to be set. Six B one is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance amending zoning ordinance Article 92, Board of Adjustments, Section 92.5, Powers and Duties, subsection 92.5.3, permitted uses of special exceptions by amending subsection 92.5.318 and subsection 92.5.336 to update Boza approval term limits. This will be set for the regular council meeting scheduled for September 28th.
Move to set the hearing.
Second by Mr. Kling. Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six B two is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning 62 acres of property lying on the north side of Cherry Tree Road and on the west side of Joe Cross Road from Residence 1B District to Residence 2 District to be set for the regular council meeting on September 28th.
Move to set the hearing.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six B three is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance zoning 5.47 acres of newly annexed property lying on the east... of newly annexed property lying on the east side of US Highway 231 South and on the south side of Bob Wallace Avenue to be set for the regular council meeting held September 28th.
Move to set the hearing?
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item 6B4, now it's my understanding again, Ms. Jordan, that you are asking for the council's action on this motion tonight?
I just would like to present it to you tonight.
Okay, so you will present tonight?
Yes.
Very good. 6B4 is a resolution to declare a public nuisance located at 812 Ryson Avenue Northeast Huntsville, Alabama, and to set the date for when objections will be heard. And this will be on August 24, 17, at the next council meeting.
That's correct.
Is there a motion to set the public hearing?
Motion to...
Motion from Mr. Culver.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Jordan, please share with us information about this.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. In my role as Community Development Director, I declared 812 Ryson Avenue Northeast a public nuisance on August 1st, 2017. Due to the current condition of the property, as you can see in the photos, the remains of a demolished mobile home are scattered across the property. I'm requesting that you set the date for a public hearing on this public nuisance for August 24th, 2017 so that all property owners and members of the public having any objections to the proposed removal of the public nuisance can have an opportunity to be heard by the city council. This is required by State of Alabama Act 1320. We'll notify all property owners of this public hearing by both regular and certified mail.
Thank you. We've already set that hearing, so we kind of got ahead of you there.
So I have done my obligation.
Very good, all right. So that concludes all public hearings to be set. We will resume with the agenda with Item 8. Huntsville Utilities Items. 8A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a tri-party agreement between TVA Huntsville and Benchmark Electronics Huntsville, Inc., allowing Benchmark Electronics Huntsville, Inc. to participate in the Valley Investment Initiative Program. There a motion to approve?
Move to approve the resolution?
Motion from Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Keith. Mr. Gertis?
Thank you, Madam President. Joe Gertis, Huntsville Utilities. This is a pretty routine agreement between TVA, us, and Benchmark Electronics. It's a manufacturing facility. This type of agreement is an incentive tool for TVA to existing industry in the valley where they commit to a certain amount of capital investment in return for some rate incentives. The details on that agreement are included in your packet information.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Gertis? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 8B is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase land for a future electric substation.
Move to approve the resolution?
Motion from Mr. Russell, second by the chair. Mr. Gertis?
Thank you, Madam President. This is for a parcel of property that's located at the southwest corner of Old Big Cove Road and Old 431 actually lies within the town limits of Owens Crossroads. The cost for this parcel is approximately $38,000.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gertis? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gertis.
Thank you.
We're grateful for the good work that you all are doing. Item 9, Board Appointments. Nine board appointments to be voted on. 9A1, Resolution Appointing John Johnson to the Von Braun Center Board of Control, Seat 4, for a term to expire August 27, 2017, nominated July 27, 2017, at the regular council meeting.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Russell. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 9A2 is a resolution of reappointing Dr. William H. Solins to the Von Braun Center Board of Control, Seat 5, for a term to expire August 27, 2021, nominated July 27, 2017, at the regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 9B is Board Appointment Nominations. The chair nominates nomination of Phil W. Bentley Jr. for reappointment to the Healthcare Authority of the City of Huntsville for a term to expire August 15, 2023. And we should note that in keeping with the Huntsville Hospital bylaws, the board sends us three nominations. In addition to Mr. Bentley, Bill Dixon and Lonnie Younger were also nominated. Are there any other nominations to come before the council? Hearing none, we will move on. Item 10, Approval of Expenditures. The Finance Committee Report. Mr. Kling, could you please give us the Finance Committee Report and the resolution authorizing expenditures for payment?
Move for payment vouchers in amount of $6,766,585.56.
Second. Second by Mr. Culver. Is there anything you would like to report before we vote? All in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Do we have any report of any kind?
No.
Moving on to Item 11, Communications from the Mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we had a few people maybe join us and we had a great crowd at the back-to-school parade for Jimison High School this past Saturday. This next Saturday is the back-to-school festival down at Grissom and we welcome everybody to come out. It's great to get ready to go back to school, although it's very hard to believe that it's already time to go back to school. Seems like the summer just blew by very quickly and it did. It's barbecue day at Green Street Market. It's happening right now. You can stop by and get a free sample of barbecue if there's any left because I heard it was going really fast earlier today about 4:00. And Under the Lights Concert is in front of Paints and Pixel and UG White is happening now on Green Street Market. We also have what I thought was every week in the city of Huntsville. The Huntsville Restaurant Week starts tomorrow, August 11th through 20th. At the Battle House every week is Restaurant Week. We go out quite often and have a great time. And we'd also like to remind you about the Free Friday Night Art Walk downtown. This is the last one of the year. There'll be lots of vendors, food, and fun. And also, there is the Battle of Food Truck All-Stars Breakfast Saturday from 7:00 to 11:00 around the square. So if you're hungry, come down to the square. There will be food trucks with lots of breakfast-type items. We made, Mr. Riley and I made one of these one time several, about a year ago and it was a lot of fun and you'll be surprised who you'll see up 7:00 in the morning. We get up early, about 5:00, but there were a few people, I think, who had stayed out for a while and maybe they were just coming in. Also, it is Dog Days, ditto, August 19th, 4:00 PM. There will be food trucks, family fun, and bring your dog along. And we wish you a great week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We will move on to communications from the council. We will begin with Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Madam President. And you had alluded to earlier, schools started in all the city and so there's kids everywhere and cars everywhere. And so I want you to be cautious of the school zones. There are gonna be issues. There already are issues probably at Huntsville High and many of our schools and I know about Grissom's having some issues, but we're gonna fix them. It's the way it starts out every year. The first two weeks are hectic for the council members and the school board members and then things start settling down. So just be patient with us and things will look better in a couple of weeks. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Madam President. Since our last council meeting during that time, we experienced the loss of Mr. William Andrew Lyon, my wife's father, my father-in-law. And I'd just like to read a little bit about him for the record. Mr. William Andrew Lyon, 92 of Huntsville, Alabama, passed away on Friday, July 28th, 2017. Andrew was born May 16th, 1925. He was the oldest of four children, to Lorenzo Thomas Lyon and Melinda Duskin Lyon in New Hope, Alabama. Andrew was devoted to Elizabeth, his wife, of 69 years and to his four children. He was also devoted to God and his country. Andrew was an active member of the Huntsville Park Church of Christ and during his latter years, he was a member of the Maysville Church of Christ. He was a veteran of the Army Air Force flying combat missions during World War II in the Pacific as a ball turret gunner on B-17 planes. His quickness, flexibility, and thin frame made him the perfect candidate for those dangerous missions. Immediately after the war, he supervised a cadre of opposition soldiers that removed landmines in Okinawa that had been placed by the enemy to kill and maim Allied forces. Upon return to Madison County, Alabama, Andrew married Elizabeth Jenkins and began employment with General Schu and later Saginaw Steering Gear. During his free time, he enjoyed working on his friend's lawnmowers and growing vegetables for his friends and family. He had the ability to repair anything mechanical and to grow any fruit or vegetable successfully. He and his wife grew most of the food that they fed the family. Andrew was an expert tomato gardener and he was the proud winner of the Botanical Gardens' largest tomato contest several times. And I just want to say it was a privilege to have been married into the family. He was a great person. He taught his children valuable life lessons and to work hard every day. And we will continue to miss him and to heed his words of wisdom. And just wanted to have that placed into the record. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Our sympathies to you and to Tangi and to your family. The next person to address will be Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. Tues, I'm sorry, Tuesday night, Monday night. I'll get it right in a minute. Monday night, we had a, I don't know if you all can hear me. Monday night, we had a town hall meeting in Old Cobblestone and we had a great turnout. I certainly want to thank John Hamilton and all of the department heads. I knew the mayor could not be there. They came out in groves and really represented the city real well. There were a lot of concerns expressed. And the interesting thing, I hope the mayor can hear me now, is that some of the concerns that they sent to us in an email in advance had already, some of them been resolved. That speaks volumes to our administration and department heads. So we went in on a good note and will continue to address all of those issues they have. So this is what this office is all about in terms of helping our community and reaching out and keeping our community informed and doing all of those things that we brag about in terms of enhancing the quality of life of our residents. So again, my hat's off to Mr. Hamilton and all of the department heads and their staff. My sincere thank you for coming out that evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. And Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to one first say thank you to Downtown Huntsville, Inc., Huntsville Y.P., and Rotorack. I had a really unique, cool, urban, I guess you can say. For most people who don't know, a lot of downtown is in District 1. And we got a chance to sort of talk to some young folks. I felt old for the first time in my life, but they really had some great perspectives. One of my constituents is on the eighth floor, so he came with a number of perspectives. And it was a really good event. I think it's gonna be something that we continue to do down the road for the residents of downtown. Also, I would like to sort of make an announcement I'll probably do at the next meeting as well. On August 29th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 sharp, we'll be having a town hall at Johnson. It will be to discuss the redevelopment and sort of the steps that we're taking to move that property forward for the betterment of the community. And I can't say it enough, hats off to the small team of Avengers, I guess you can say, Colonel Hamilton, Shane, Dennis, all of planning who worked with me to sort of get prepared for what should really be a great announcement for our community. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. As Mayor Battle already indicated, this Saturday will be the education celebration. Commissioner Riddick sponsors the celebration every year to highlight the schools in his district, most of which are in District 3. All of our schools have booths, different organizations come, businesses from throughout South Huntsville, and it genuinely becomes a great sort of a street fair. This time, it's going to be held at the new Grissom campus. We're excited to bring it to that venue. I'm going to have a table this year because there is so much information to share about all the good things going on in South Huntsville, so we want to make sure everybody gets that. It again will be this Saturday, starting at 9:00. From 9:00 to 12:00, there will be music, there will be food, there will be fun, there will be good time for all, so please join us.
Madam President?
Oh, Mr. Culver.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. You all may have heard last, this past weekend, there was a shooting at Bridge Street. And I did do a media interview regarding that. But I want the general public to know that Bridge Street is safe. In fact, I indicated that I would be hanging out there and I did after my town hall meeting on Monday night. It's unfortunate and our law enforcement and their security there at Bridge Street, both are doing a great job. It's just that sometimes unorthodoxed and unfortunate things can happen. But two families have been impacted. The family of the victim who was shot and then the guy, the young man that did the shooting. We're talking about a 15-year-old and a 16-year-old. Guns in the hands of people like that, certainly not only is illegal, but is definitely not good. So I just want the public to know Bridge Street is safe. People can come out and still have a good time. That was just an unfortunate incident that hopefully will not only not happen there, but nowhere else as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Culver. And on that note, let me tell you about my visit to the Criminal Investigation Division. We have a brand-new location for this new department of the Police Department. I got to visit this week. I recommend to all of you that you visit. And one of our topics of conversation, as I visited with the officers who are conducting all the investigations for our city, was to talk about Bridge Street. It happened to be the day after. And we had lots of conversations about what are the opportunities for improvement at Bridge Street and what can we do to make sure that the public is safe. Bridge Street is private property, but it's also one of our great tax generators. So we need to make sure that the public is safe there and feels good about going and a plan is in place to make that happen. So again, if you haven't visited CID, please visit. Captain Rizzo does a great job with those folks serving there. I also, thanks to Mary Jane Kaler. Dr. Kaler put together the presentation tonight to honor Detective Sergeant Tomlin. And again, to create those role models for young women who are considering serving in the police force is so important and we hope that Sergeant Detective, Detective Sergeant Tomlin will become that role model for those young ladies. Finally, I had a surprise as I walked out of my door this morning, a little after 6:00, and saw my yard covered in a layer of mud and debris and a little bit of debris stacked up against my garage. And I thought, what in the world has happened? I didn't even know it rained last night. Leave alone that it rained 4.6 inches, according to my husband's rain gauge. As I went out and began my morning walk in the community, I saw that I actually had got the least of the effects of all that rain that came down. I saw retention walls that had come down and the stones had been scattered across the street. I saw pieces of asphalt about seven feet wide that had been lifted up and floated down the roadway's, sections of sidewalk that had washed out, trees that had come down. There was a lot of rain that came down and it all came down Green Mountain right into our subdivision. As I called Chris McNeese to ask for his, or texted Chris McNeese to ask for his help, he was already way ahead of me. He was in another subdivision. And she showed me pictures that were way worse than anything we were dealing with. I found out later that the other side of Green Mountain, over off of Green Mountain Road, was also having similar challenges. Again, heavy rain coming down in a very short period of time, washing out roads, flooding garages and basements. It was those three neighborhoods who seemed to be targeted by this little event. And it was very difficult. It was a small area, it was a big thing to those folks who were impacted. I have to tell you, though, that my experience with the city staff today, and I have had some wonderful experiences with city staff, but my experience with city staff today was absolutely the best ever. From that first text to Chris McNeese who said, "We're on it", to sending, to engineering, to going out and making site visits when I would get calls or emails from constituents and before I could even get there... and before I could even get there, city staff was there, engineering was there, Public Works was there. I also returned some phone calls from some constituents who had sent me some angry emails, thinking this was all the city's fault, not realizing, like me, that 4.6 inches of rain had fallen in a very short period of time. And as I returned those phone calls, they said, "Oh, never mind, somebody from the city has already been out here. We're all good. It's all been taken care of." You have the nicest people working for you. That in a difficult situation for somebody to say that is high praise indeed. And so, I want our departments to know everybody who contributed to serving the people who have been, in many cases, just really devastated by this. It's an event that's not covered by flood insurance, who knew? Because it's not rising water, it's water running off a mountain. And so, they're really in a hard place. And the city is putting together a plan to help them. There was a team that met today, just as they would if there was a tornado or anything else. This is a disaster for those people who are impacted, and thank you to all, everybody who's working on that. Chris and I are going to be bright and early, visiting with some of those folks there off of Comanche Trail and Rock Hill tomorrow morning. That concludes our communications from the council. We will move on to Item 13, unfinished business items for action. 13A is Ordinance Number 17-540, declaring property owned by the City of Huntsville located at 2713 and 2715 Wilson Drive surplus. This was introduced at the July 27, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Motion from Mr. Russell, second by the chair. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Robinson. This ordinance will declare 2713 and 2715 Wilson Drive as surplus property. The property was purchased for the construction of affordable housing in Terry Heights. And if you declare this property surplus tonight, the process will begin to build two homes on these lots in this neighborhood.
Very good.
They'll be built with our Partner Family Services Center.
And you all have done some beautiful houses over there. It really is changing the face of that neighborhood.
It absolutely is.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13B is an Ordinance Number 17-541, declaring certain equipment surplus and selling it, selling at a public auction. This was introduced July 27, 2017.
Move to approve the ordinance?
At the council meeting, motion by Mr. Russell, second by the chair.
I'm ready to vote.
All in favor? Is there someone who would like to present for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. My name is Ricky Wilkinson. On behalf of General Services.
Thank you.
These items are janitorial supplies and equipment that is no longer needed by our department. These items are now furnished by a new vendor that we have onboard, janitorial vendor.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13C is Ordinance Number 17-542, annexing 5.99 acres of land lying on the north side of Cherry Tree Road and east of Esslinger Drive, introduced at the July 27, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Keith.
Ashley Nichols, Planning Division. This property is approximately 5.99 acres. This property is located east of Esslinger Drive and on the north side of Cherry Tree Road. This property is currently vacant land, and this will be an addition to the proposed Wilson Cove subdivision.
Is there anyone who has questions for Ms. Nichols? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. 13D, Ordinance Number 17-543, amending Ordinance 00-819 as amended by Ordinance 06-518 as further amended by Ordinance 10-205 concerning use of public rights of way by Level III Communications LLC. This was introduced at the July 27, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Motion from Mr. Russell, second by the chair. Mr. Riley, do you have information about this for us?
This is just a readjustment, I guess you would say, a resumption or renewal of a franchise agreement, basically to get it to concur along with an agreement with regard to receipt of in-kind services from this particular provider in lieu of payment. They were providing certain fiber and things of that nature. And that particular part of the agreement concluded on 2021. Their franchise agreement expired in 2016, so it's a revival of that so that they will both go for the same period of time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Riley? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13E is Ordinance Number 17-544, declaring certain equipment as surplus and to be sold to Ranger Services, introduced at the July 27, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Second by the chair. Is there any discussion, any questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13F, Ordinance Number 17-545, declaring that upon transfer of the ownership of the current Virgilai Grissom High School site at 7901 Bailey Cove Road to the City of Huntsville, that site shall be officially known as the Sandra Moon Community Complex, introduced July 27, 2017, at the regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. It is really, it's a tremendous honor for me to make the motion to approve this ordinance. Sandra, as most of you know, served for 12 years on this city council. She is, and this, I do not use this word lightly, beloved in South Huntsville. A week does not go by before someone shares with me an experience they had with Sandra Moon, and that was certainly true today. As I visited all these different sites where flooding and property damage had occurred, people said, "Oh, I remember when Sandra Moon used to come out." There were many people who shared memories and experiences with Sandra. Sandra, many people may not know, was by training a librarian, and the heart piece of the Sandra Moon Community Complex is going to be a new 35,000-square-foot library. I think she would be as thrilled as anyone to know that her name was going to be associated with the community complex and with that library. So, I, I'm just thrilled that we are doing this tonight. Any other comments?
I just commend the chair and Mayor Battle for bringing this and sponsoring it. It was my privilege to work with her, and she was beloved in not just, I know, not just in southwest Huntsville, but also southwest Huntsville, I think in north Huntsville. She was a great neighborhood advocate, a great person to work with, and I think the two of you all have made an outstanding choice on coming up with this name for this outstanding person.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, oh, Mr. Mayor Battle, would you like, your name is on there, too.
You know, this is one, it's kind of bittersweet. Sandra was more than a council member, she was just a good friend, and a very good friend to myself. She and John right now, I guarantee her up in heaven, and John's telling them how to do it, and Sandra's saying, "John, be quiet." And that's probably the way it is right now, but you know, they, she, she had the heart of a true public servant. She was somebody who did not believe in being political or did not believe in being the name politician. She was just one of the true public servants. And as we, as we honor her tonight, I think it's very fitting that we send a copy of this to her sons and daughter, who are carrying on her legacy, doing public service in other areas. And it's one that you hate to, because it kind of closes a chapter in a book. And as you close that chapter in a book, you say goodbye to an old friend, so, but it is very fitting. And every time we drive down, down by the Grissom campus and we see the Moon Complex, I think everybody will remember what public service is about and what it means to actually do something good for your community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Any other comments? All in favor of approving the ordinance, please indicate.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. And I love the idea of sending that to her family. They were all really, really excited about this. 13G, Ordinance Number 17-546, amending Ordinance Number 89-79. Classification and Salary Plan Ordinances was introduced July 27, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Motion from Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Human Resources, Mr. Thomas?
That's fine. Counsel, this is an ordinance to amend our salary and classification plan based upon some audits that were conducted by Human Resources. I also think it'll be a good time just to refresh everyone on the audit process. You know, an audit, it can come two ways to Human Resources, one by the employee or the department head. And the reason we conduct audits is when an employee believes that their duties and responsibilities have increased, or they have been assigned new duties and responsibilities, or if the department head is looking to create a new position. What we do, the employee will be issued a job information questionnaire that's completed, and that form will also be completed by supervisor all the way up to the department head. HR will take that information, conduct an audit, and sit down with the employee all the way up to the department head as necessary, and evaluate that information to determine if it needs to be adjusted, whether salary and/or title. And as a result of that process, that's what's before you today, is an amendment to the classification plan based upon the audits.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. Are there any questions for Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Thomas, would you remind how many audits you had and what the, how many did not have action and then how many did?
Yes, sir. We conducted roughly about 20 audits. There were 12 that either had a salary grade change or title change, and there were eight that were properly classified out of that 20.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13H, Ordinance Number 17-547, amending the budget ordinance number 16-659 to modify the authorized strength of the departments introduced at the July 27, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am. This is just the budget ordinance to go along with the classification study and audits.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President, if I could kind of piggyback off what Mr. Thomas just said, this is our process for our employees who feel like that they deserve more money, that they're doing more jobs, more, more work than what their job originally had as a description, and that they're doing more. I think it's a very fair process. As you can see, there were 20 job audits which were done, 12 resulted in people actually getting reclassified or are retitled in their position and getting remunerated for doing more work. Eight of them were found to be that they were still within the guidelines of what their job description was when they originally took the job. And it's not a process of just giving someone a raise. It's a process of being very fair to our employees and having a fair process to go through each time that an employee wants to look at their salary, their classification. And I think it's, we as a city should be very proud that we have this process in place that, that we can go through very calmly and deliberately and make sure that we're actually paying our people for what they do and paying them the proper amounts for what they do. So, Mr. Thomas, thank you and your staff for going through this, and you know, this is what, about once a year that we go through this process?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Item 14, new business items for introduction. These items will be, are introduced for consideration at the August 24, 2017, regular council meeting. 14A is introduction of an ordinance annexing 0.86 acres of land lying east of Highway 431 South and on the east side of Wade Road. 14B is introduction of an ordinance approving the naming of an unnamed street to be known as Joe's Place. 14C is an introduction of an ordinance approving the following street name change, from Chase Farm Boulevard to One Aviation Way. 14D is introduction of an ordinance condemning property and authorizing disposal, trade, sale, or destruction of surplus property. 14E is introduction of an ordinance declaring property located 2446 Shepherd Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 35810, surplus. 14F is introduction of an ordinance amending Article III, storage and collection of Chapter 22, solid waste of the Code of Ordinances. Again, those items will be considered at the August 24 meeting. That brings us to Item 15, new business items for consideration or action. Are there any items that any council member wishes to hold for separate consideration?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Culver?
Can we hold Item 15A as in apple, H as in hotel, AH?
15AH? Are there any other items anyone wishes to hold for separate consideration?
Madam President, can we hold 15AE, please?
15AE? Are there any items anyone wishes to hold for separate consideration? Hearing none, we will go on. AE and AH. 15A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and low bidder Reed Construction Company, Inc., for resurfacing of residential street, 2017, project number 71-17-RR01. 15B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and McDonnell Farms for the lease of farmland in the Greenbrier area. 15C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and McDonnell Farms for the lease of farmland in Cummings Research Park. 15D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Croy Engineering LLC for landscape architectural and engineering design services for Dry Creek Greenway Phase 1, project number 65-05-WP02. 15E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and S&amp;M E, Inc., for construction testing services for EUL multi-use path and parking area, project number 71-17-SP40, and LDOT project numbers, TAPHV TA14953 and TAPHV TA16948. 15F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the low bidder SJNL General Contractor LLC for Redstone Square Drive, project number 71-17-SP38. 15G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an adjustment to the original agreement between the North Alabama Highway Safety Officer and the City of Huntsville, Alabama, for an additional $3,000 in project funds. 15H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Internal Revenue Service Criminal Investigation. 15I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Southern Communications Services, Inc. 15J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative services agreement between the City of Huntsville and the United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, Wildlife Services. 15K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one and final to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., dated November 17, 2016, as adopted by the City Council of the City of Huntsville by Resolution Number 16-912. 15L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Huntsville and Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, Inc. 15M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Russell Hill Cancer Foundation, Inc. 15N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for a transportation alternatives project between the State of Alabama and the City of Huntsville regarding the EUL Greenway Parking Facility Supplemental Agreement 1. City of Huntsville, project number 71-17-SP40, LDOT project number, TAPHV-TA16948-S1. 15O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for a transportation alternatives project between the State of Alabama and the City of Huntsville regarding the EUL bike and pedestrian corridor, City of Huntsville, project number 71-17-SP40, LDOT project number, TAPHV-TA14953-S1, supplement number one. 15P is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Bryant Bank, letter of credit number 1179 for Iredale subdivision. 15Q is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke Bryant Bank, letter of credit number 1180 for Cedar Park subdivision. 15R is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke Bryant Bank, letter of credit number 1231 for Cedar Park subdivision, phase two. 15S is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke Service Force Bank, letter of credit number 13780 for Hawks Ridge Estates subdivision. 15T is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke National Bank of Commerce, letter of credit number 401488100 for Willows at Sanctuary Cove subdivision. 15U is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into professional services agreement between the City of Huntsville and Columbia Telecommunications Corporation, doing business as CTC Technology and Energy. 15V is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the claim of Catherine Deborah Ivy Floyd, claim number fiscal year 16-71. 15W is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the low bidders meeting specifications as outlined in the attached summary bids for acceptance. 15X is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 16-659 by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. 15Y is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. 15Z is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 16- Fifteen Z is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number sixteen dash six five nine by changing appropriated funding for various departments and funds. Fifteen double A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract between the City of Huntsville and Family Services Center, Inc. to convey ownership of twenty seven thirteen and twenty seven fifteen Wilson Drive for the purpose of constructing new home investment partnership funded homes. Fifteen A B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract between the City of Huntsville and Family Services Center, Inc. for the use of home investment partnership funds for affordable housing at twenty seven thirteen Wilson Drive. Fifteen A C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract between the City of Huntsville and Family Services Center, Inc. acting as a community housing development organization for the use of home investment partnership funds for affordable housing at twenty seven fifteen Wilson Drive. Fifteen A D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number six to renew and extend an agreement with Delta Dental Insurance Company for group dental insurance. We're holding fifteen A E, fifteen A F, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the master software license services and support agreement between the City of Huntsville and Highland Software, Inc. as adopted by resolution number seventeen dash three one nine on April twenty seven, twenty seventeen. We're holding... I'm sorry, no, we're not. Fifteen A G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a waiver of notice and consent form in the matter of the estate of Sheena Ann Valderra's deceased and authorizing the acceptance of a donation to Huntsville Animal Services, a department of the City of Huntsville, Alabama. We're holding A H. Fifteen I A I, request for authorization to advertise and fill the budgeted vacant position of water pollution control facilities technician, grade thirteen, at higher than a minimum if necessary.
Madam President, I move for consolidation approval of fifteen A through fifteen A D, fifteen A F, fifteen A G, and fifteen A I.
Second by the chair. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We will move on to fifteen A E. Fifteen A E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Care Here Management, P L L C. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, yes, counsel. This is the renewal agreement with Care Here, who provides on-site clinic services for our health and wellness center. And so this is a renewal agreement with them for those services.
Are there questions from the council?
Yes, Madam President. And Mr. Thomas, we talked earlier. So I'm at a town hall. One of my neighbors is Public Works. The other neighbor, just so I have a couple houses down, is Huntsville Utilities. Huntsville Utilities is Huntsville Hospital. How do we, I guess if you can just give me, I had no answer for him, how we get to this point?
Yes, sir. A great question. Our team, our HR team, and I want to thank them for the work that they did on that. We requested some information from Care Here before the renewal, as well as from Huntsville Hospital, to do a thorough evaluation of the services that they provide for on-site clinic services. And we did an informal process and got that information in. We asked some additional questions to follow up with the response that they gave us, as well as asked for their best and final offer. And after our thorough evaluation of that, we believe that the Care Here services that are being provided are the best value for the city for the services that they're offering. And it's been well received also by our employees, our retirees, and their family members.
That's my second question. Have you ever had anybody who say that, you know, this, are any complaints, I guess, about Care Here? Do you take them pretty serious, or is there like a, because I guess his argument was about family and some type of comparative. Do we take the complaints about Care Here to Care Here as we talk about these negotiations, the issues that people have about wait times or whatever it is?
Right. Yes, sir. Any complaint that we have in our office, we take very serious, and we will look into that and do everything we can to resolve those issues. And if there are any that need to be addressed to us, we will be happy to look at them further if there are any others. But yes, we do take complaints serious, and we try to do everything we can to provide the best services to our employees and their family members.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I've heard some concerns expressed regarding employees who are not able to get same-day appointments. Have we addressed that with Care Here?
Yes, ma'am, we have. And one of the things that we're doing, we have them all aware, it takes, you know, an appointment to get into a C A provider. One of the things that we have implemented is we try as much as possible to work someone in if we can. They have to meet certain criterias because it does require an appointment. So we have some days that have been set aside, about three days a week, for about an hour each day. If there is a true need or urgent type care, we want to try to address that. Our staff, and we have a great staff down there, who are serving our employees, we try their best to work them in. Now, the challenge sometime is, you know, there are times when people just want to walk in at any time they want to. Well, it is an appointment schedule, and we want to do everything we can to honor those appointments for the people that have set those appointments. But if there's an urgent need, we're doing everything we can to try to address those, and we will continue to monitor that.
Thank you.
I guess I want to piggyback off the two. Are the amenities under Care Here, and that was actually a great point he said. The, I know we have the fifty pool, YMCA and stuff like that. Is that under Care Here or is that separate under the city?
The YMCA.
And yeah, I guess the health amenities that we do?
The YMCA that you're referring to is something separate.
Okay.
That's a tool that we use for wellness services. We want to try to incentivize some of our employees to go and work out. We have that incentive through YMCA, but that is not through Care Here.
Got you. Thank you.
Mr. Culver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And I'm listening to everything that is being said. And I have scheduled appointments with Care Here. They're very punctual.
Yes, sir.
And they get you in and out in a timely manner. Now, those were things that could wait, like my annual blood work, things of that nature. They were scheduled maybe a couple of weeks out. But I've also had the occasion where I had an emergency, something very urgent. And I went in early in the morning, and they were able to see me, and I want to say within a very, very reasonable time.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, the times that I have experienced their services, which has been numerous over the years as I get more, more, more mature. It's been great, so I haven't had a bad experience with them at all up to this point. So they're doing great.
I want to thank you for that, and we definitely convey that to the medical staff, and we appreciate your maturing and not getting older, as you want to say. But we appreciate that, and we appreciate you utilizing Care Here, and I want to thank all our employees, retirees, and their family members for utilizing the services as well.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Kling?
How is the scope of this contract going to be different than the services they provided for the past three years?
The scope of it is essentially the same. One of the things that we are doing is looking at some other options. There's a mail order program, mail order program for people who might have to take chronic medication. And we're looking at implementing that, as well as maybe some reciprocal agreements with some of the other Care Here facilities within the state of Alabama. We still got to work that out, but that's some of the things that we're looking at as well.
I guess let me echo what Councilman Culver said. I go there myself. And again, I think the care I've seen for myself and also for other city employees has been very positive. They have certainly done a very good job, and I think feedback I've heard from employees has certainly been very positive about them, too.
Thank you. And once again, I appreciate your support, and I have to, my hat's off to the HR team for what they do to try to manage that, and I really want to give the honor to them for what they do to help that facility and the medical staff.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Thomas. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen A H is a resolution authorizing the city council to select and appoint two full-time municipal judges in accordance with the process described by resolution number seventeen dash four five seven and is advertised on July twenty nine, twenty seventeen, through August second, twenty seventeen. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. As you all know, we have advertised the position. We have received twenty-six applications from some very highly qualified individuals who are interested in serving as our next municipal judge. We currently have one vacancy, but we are authorized funding for two and a half positions. This would approve authorization for an additional half-time judge, so we would have three full-time judges. We have a city that's growing. We have needs in our municipal court that are growing, and this would be an opportunity to respond to that growth. It would give us flexibility to offer different options for our citizens, including more night court hours, perhaps even a Saturday court. There are many opportunities that this would provide for us.
Madam President, this is exactly what you said. This gives us more opportunity to expand the hours of the court to a Saturday court where somebody gets a ticket, they can come down, and if they want to present a case against it, they can do it without taking time off from work, possibly even more nighttime courts. Right now, we have a problem with our eleven to seven shifts. As they come off that eleven-seven shift, if they got to be in court that morning, they really don't have time to go back home and get to sleep. I think it's an officer-friendly and a customer-friendly move to give us a few more hours on the court so that the court can be responsive to both the citizens and to our officers who are serving us. When we started having conversations with the chief, it was very well received because it does make it much easier for one of those officers who is working those late shifts to actually get the things, get the court case scheduled on a day that he can actually have some time off. So that's, those are the main reasons that we're looking at it. Pay scale wise, Mr. Hamilton, what'd we come up with on pay scale wise? Did it come out almost awash with cutting part-time? We were going to add a little bit, but it was pretty close.
Yeah, I mean, it will be a little bit more, but I think the issue is not so much about the cost. It's more about making sure that we've effectively resourced the court to be efficient in their operation. So, you know, as Madam President said, right now, the court is resourced with two full-time judges and one part-time judge, and the proposal is to go to a three full-time and to eliminate that part-time. So you're effectively, you know, doubling the salary to that one judge. There are, and also make sure that folks don't confuse, there are substitute judges that we have under contract that are called in as needed. So if one of our judges takes vacation for a week or is out, you know, ill, or those kind of things, there are substitute judges that are able to come in and ensure the dockets are still addressed. That system would not necessarily change, though having a third full-time judge would give the presiding judge more flexibility. There may be situations where they wouldn't have to call in a substitute, but that would be really a judgment called by the presiding judge on those particular days or weeks. So really, you know, the focus is on ensuring that we continue to grow the total capacity of the court system as our, as our community grows.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Madam President. And being a former employee, or in fact, the go-to person for the court over the years, and keep in mind that I have worked for some seventeen years in our City of Huntsville Municipal Court and was instrumental in the design of the court and a lot of other things. So, and I don't know if anyone has even spoken with members of the court, namely the two judges that are there, or even the clerk of court. I see she's here tonight. But when we add another judgeship, we got to add another court martial. We've got to add at least one more, if not two more, public defenders. We have to add another probation officer. We have to add another prosecutor. And we have to add another clerk for that particular courtroom. So I just hope we're thinking this through as we, as we make that decision. I realize the court is growing. As the police department grows, one police officer can generate an inordinate amount of extra activity for a particular courtroom. So when you add ten, fifteen, twenty, and I know we need them, chief, additional officers, that's going to be more activity. So I applaud what we're doing. I'm just saying, as we do this, we've got to really think it through in terms of the support personnel because right now, and I stand to be corrected, I know Ms. Huffman is here, who is our clerk of court, but I believe the personnel staff is a little short as we speak. So, you know, we'll just have to make room in the budget for these other positions if we do that.
Mr. Hamilton, I believe your office has been talking through logistics and how a lot of this would work.
We've begun that process, but some of it also, you know, ensuring that we first have, you know, council's resolution indicating, you know, an intent for us to move in that direction. There's a number of logistical things, as Mr. Culver points out, that will have to be addressed as you go through that process. So I think first, because you're, you know, at the beginning stages of a hiring process, there's a real desire to be transparent about the intent and not do this at the end of your hiring process. So that before you begin the interview process, council and all of the, all of the potential judges that you would interview, all the applicants you'd interview, know going in that that's what your intent is. The resolution also, you know, specifically directs the administration to then take on those logistical issues that need to be addressed. And there's several of them. So obviously, starting with the personnel is the most obvious one. I believe that Mr. Culver is correct that there will need to be additional positions added, though there are some of the resources that exist to support the part-time judge that would be able to roll over to this third full-time. So it's probably not a hundred percent additive, but there will be some, and absolutely, that analysis will have to happen. And the budget ordinances that would cause that to occur, to include actually the budget ordinance that actually officially adds the third judge, will come to you. That's one of the actions that, in this resolution, you're directing the administration to begin the process. So the personnel is one piece of it. The other piece is also the facility. And General Services is, has started the process of analyzing that building. There's a number of changes that need to occur in it, and they already were looking at some other components of the building related to police and fire in that building, so they'll take a more comprehensive look. There's actually things about that building that were originally designed to accommodate this growth. But those spaces that were originally designed in, there is a third courtroom that was designed in the building in the absence of needing a third courtroom in the last few years. That space is being used for other purposes. So we'll have to accommodate those things. So you will see budget ordinances to address the personnel needs in the coming months. You will also see, you know, if we need architect contracts or other things like that related to the building, you'll see those actions begin to come your way. And then to support all of that will be the budget that will bring to you in September will also address these needs. So, you know, particularly in the capital plan, you will see a line in the capital plan specifically for accommodating, getting the facility renovated to the way it needs to accommodate this. So you're absolutely correct that it's going to cost money, but ultimately, you know, the mayor's recommendation is that we take that on because our community needs to have a fully resourced and efficient court system.
The result of those expenditures will be increased service to our citizens, and it will make the lives of our police officers a little bit easier. Mr. Keith?
I just have a couple of questions. Thank you, Madam President. Have we ever had more than two? And to anybody's knowledge, we have never had more than two?
Mr. Mayor Battle?
I'm sorry.
Never more than two full-time, but when you add up all the part-times, they would add up to probably a third when you add them all up.
So I guess that's my question, maybe Trey or John can handle. The current part-time is on contract, I think we signed the contract for how long?
I believe the current contract still has a little bit more than a year to go. And so, again, that's part of one of, you know, the issues that we need to address is as we go through the process here in the coming weeks, is identifying exactly how that contract is resolved. So that's work to be done. It's not a question that we're prepared to answer tonight. We'll, that we'll address that here in the coming weeks.
Got you. And then do we now set precedence for three? So let's say anything happens, forbidding, anything happens. Are we saying that from now on, we will always have three with this resolution? Does that make sense?
Well, this is, really, what the resolution does is expresses council's intent, which starts the ball rolling on the more formal actions. So the budget ordinance that actually officially formally creates the authorization will come to you in a future council meeting. The intent tonight was really to get this discussion onto the floor and ask council to pass a resolution that would express its intent and allow you to move forward in your hiring process, and then also allow us to begin, when I say us, I mean the administration and the various departments, to take on the logistical challenges of being prepared for that.
And I guess I'm saying that because, one, I agree with the ordinance, but I'm just saying, out of respect, as we go down this hiring process of a judge, considering that there is a contract with a part-time judge, and foreseeably, he might or might not be in the selection of the two individuals, there would be, you know, there would be a conversation of respect, understanding that.
Absolutely. And he has a contract, which, you know, a contract is a two-way street. And so we have obligations to him and him to us, and so that's absolutely part of the discussion that will have to occur as we go forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Riley, did you have something to add?
I was going to say, from what I understand, I don't think we're in any danger of running out of business for our judges anytime soon. So I'm sure even... So I'm sure even if we were in a situation where we had three full-time judges and still remaining time on a contract judge, that there would be plenty of work available, at least for the time being.
Which is, that's what I was basically, would he want to stay on? And we have, now we would have three and then one part-time, would that, would that happen? I guess, would we try and, you know, sort of close the contract if we don't need a third, I mean, a fourth part-time judge?
Right. I think that's to be determined. I mean, and so there's a number of different ways that that issue could be resolved and so there's work to be done to bring back to you a recommendation on exactly how to resolve that.
Understood.
And again, I think our objective with all of this is to create a court that is efficient, that provides good service, that works effectively with our law enforcement officials who spend a lot of time, of their time in court. And we're going to do what needs to be done to make that happen. Is there any, yes?
Yeah, this is probably a nothing question to ask our esteemed city attorney. We've got all these applicants, they were applying for one slot. Now we're quote, changing the conditions, so to speak, where instead of one slot, there'll be two slots, which on the surface, it seems that increases their chances to be selected. Nobody can use that as a technicality and complain that we were not fair to them because they weren't selected instead of one slot, there were two slots.
Counsel, just to address your question, there's no implication about that. As a city, wherever we're hiring someone, we advertise for a position, how many we fill is really left up to the city to make that determination. So there's no problem with that.
That's fine. I figured it was probably a nothing issue, but I just wanted to make sure.
And I would add, it actually happens more often probably than council's aware of because it's just not an issue that you have to address. You know, we could have a situation where there's three sanitation worker positions vacant, we advertise to fill those three and while that process is going on, a fourth vacancy occurs, we'll go ahead and fill the fourth vacancy as well off that same list. So it's actually fairly routine within our system when we have, you know, multiple positions that are similar.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? None? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Madam President, I'm going to abstain on that.
Oh, please.
I don't support it, but let the record reflect.
Please let the record show that Mr. Culver has abstained. I would also remind the council that if you have not yet turned in to me your paperwork indicating the individual, the applicants that you wish to interview, please do so. Mr. Thomas and I will be meeting tomorrow afternoon and we will begin scheduling those interviews. So we look forward to getting this process started and hiring two judges. That concludes our, our business. We will move to item sixteen, legal department items transactions. We have no vacation easements. We do however, have two vacation rights away. Sixteen B one is a resolution consenting to the vacation of a portion of a right-of-way lot thirteen, Village of Providence, three twenty-eight, Providence Main Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Sixteen B two is an ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of a right-of-way lot thirteen, Village of Providence, three twenty-eight, Providence Main Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. That we have no deeds for acceptance, routine bond satisfactions or liquor bond mortgages. That brings us to item seventeen, non-roster communications from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Ms. Reed, please come to the podium.
I'm not a paid lobbyist, but I, and I don't have the money to pay you all to lobby you either, but I am lobbying you to try to save this building, put it back right where it is. This piece of property and the one next door. You've got an underground hideout where you can get out of this place if you had to. You're not going to have it sitting up on that hill up there unless you dig a tunnel a long way under the grounds. Anyway, you need to think about that. We could take the marble off of the top of the building, put it around the bottom of the building, and there's just a lot of things we could think about. And I was told it would cost too much to move these people in a building and rebuild this building. What do you care about the cost? What difference does it make? You waste more than that every day. Every time I come down here, I see waste, waste, waste. The bicycles is the biggest seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar waste going down my street I have ever seen this city do. Go down that street and see bump, 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 tear up your car. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that street and wrecks on that corner every other day down there. I don't, use some common sense. Think, think, think. Sit up at night, you want me to sit up with some of you? Have some meetings and let me come to some of them. And I just think, and I think that's what you need to be thinking about. I'd like to see this building put right back where it was. I'm starting lobbying you, Mayor Battle, and then I'll start on these councilmen. Maybe they can fuss at me for nothing else. Anyway, everybody's asking me why the Joseph Larry Road's taking so long bringing it in from Governor's Drive into the city. Somebody's wanting to know, why are we holding up that road right there? We don't have any money? Take that bicycle money and finish that road up there. There's just a lot of things you're not thinking about it here. And somebody called me and stopped me today and said, I called the inspection department trying to get my house inspected, they're so busy over there, so far behind in so many weeks, they don't have enough help. And then we got two sets of rules out here about the property. You mow people's houses and charge them for it. And these landowners that own land in this city, we look like we live in the country. It's nasty, the grasses are high, nobody ever tells them to mow it, and it's up over my waist. Do we have two sets of rules? One for the homeowners and one, we don't have one for the people that own the land that's not developing it? I mean, I'd like to see us get closer to connection and have the same sets of rules for the big developers that's not getting their grass mowed. Anyway, I know my time is up. I love you. I will be back. Think about City Hall, I'm not going to let that go. And the convention center, we need to give the coke plant to the Von Braun Civic Center as a convention center and bring in more, instead of bicycles, put the money where it can bring some money back in there. The bicycles are not going to bring us in a lot of money. We're going to spend more on them bicycles in that golf course than we ever would have thought about putting in the golf course. Mr. Hamilton, I'm going to lobby you on that one till the day I die. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Townsend and I'm at twenty-three oh one Old Blue Springs Road. This is my first time ever greeting a council, so good evening, councilmen and women.
Welcome, Ms. Townsend, we're glad you're here.
Thank you. Just make this as quick as I can, I don't want my time to run out. I'm here to request your support. I was given a vision, I'm a performer and I'm a missionary and things like that and I've been a teacher, mother, grandmother, live in the community. And I love children and I love people and our ministry consists of families. And I wanted to do more and I was given a vision of how to thank God for one more day. And I think all of us can do that. But being that I'm a performer, God's in it too. So he gave me a vision, not just to thank him, but that we can use this during the bicentennial. And the Lord gave me a vision and I brought my vision board, I didn't know how to do it, but I can tell you what it says without even looking at it because he's been going over it in my head so long. But besides it being just for bicentennial, he said Guinness Book Record two, let's make a world record, let's do three things at one time. So this is how it's supposed to go with help. I'll put this down here. If you can envision, this is my vision of outdoors, a red barn, and I'm going to use the song of a deceased artist called Andre Crouch, he used to be on W O C G, Lord, I Thank You For The Morning. And he said, thank you for a brand-new dawning. Just think of flowers, all the flowers are swaying, but these are all puppets and props. You think of the trees and they have birds in it and they are birds that are puppets and props and they're singing, Lord, I thank you for the morning. Over here, we have, at the barn, the red barn, we have puppets that are horses and sheep's and dogs and chickens and they're singing, Lord, I thank you for the morning. We even have a puppet that's a son. We have puppets over here that are vegetables and fruits, watermelons and pumpkins that are singing, Lord, I thank you. We have a pond here that has fishes and ducks and they're swimming back and forth and jumping up and down saying, Lord, I thank you for the morning. We have a cornfield, the baby's at the bottom, maybe little brother in the middle, maybe mom or dad at the top, and they're pulling the strings of the puppet saying, Lord, I thank you for the morning. It's something they can do historically together, not only to celebrate the bicentennial, but to do something in unified for themselves as a people that love the Lord and is grateful, love their community, thankful for all the things that have happened over the past hundred years, two hundred years. I've come a long way from Pennsylvania, but I know Alabama has changed and I want to be a great part of this and just thanking God for another opportunity to do good and show the love of God. And we can do it in a wonderful way that involves family, community, churches, school, whosoever. So I'm asking for your support because I don't know how to start no more than being a visionary. So that's why I'm here.
Madam President, if I may, I've had a direct conversation with a large amount of the bicentennial staff and I will share my information if that's okay to connect you with the two committees. They have two spheres right now going for the bicentennial. I have no problem with making the introduction, one's name is Tony Smith and then the other one who's the director. So if you don't mind staying until we adjourn, I'll definitely get you the information to connect with the bicentennial committee for North Huntsville as well as Huntsville as a whole.
I appreciate that and thank you very much for this time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for sharing your vision with us, Ms. Townsend. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council at this time?
Before we adjourn?
Mr. Keith?
Last thing. This is a very respectful thing and I hope everybody in the city staff understands, the young lady that is sitting behind Ken Binion is not Ken Binion. But as some of you might know, Ken started his Kimo today and as we all know, he is an amazing man. He is a pillar of strength and in all ways, he is a true mentor for me.